Today is August ninth, twenty twenty one, and it is approximately six o'clock P M. First of all, I like to, our meeting has been called to order. We do have a quorum here. We have Ms. Teresa Young, Dr. Joe Schumaker, and myself, Yvonne Cox, at this time. I'm sure that our other board members will be coming in momentarily. One thing I'd like to say right now is to all of our Columbus Municipal School District employees, please remember that as we pass through the lives of so many children, sometimes we're not remembered. Yet, a very special few of us will leave a lasting impression in their minds and in their hearts. Thank you for being the one who will live forever in the minds and hearts of our students and touched and whom lives we continue to touch. Thank you so very much at the beginning of this new school year, and have a great school year. Next, we would like to go to the invocation. Will you please bow your heads with me? Dear Heavenly Father, I come to you this evening, thanking and praising you, God. I thank you for waking all of us up this morning, and I thank and I praise you for staying with our children, teachers, administrators, everyone throughout this busy day. I pray a special prayer for our parents. Encourage their hearts so that they will know and understand that we here at the school district, we really love our kids, and we are truly doing what is best for them in all ways that we can. The Father, I pray that you come in the midst of the school meeting, guide our actions, guide our words and our comments as we make decisions that is truly in the best for the Columbus Municipal School District. This we ask in Jesus' name, and for His sake, I pray. Amen. You please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moving right along with our agenda items, item number three, requesting a motion to approve Agenda B B B Policy, B C B D. Motion has been made by Dr. Schumaker, second by Mrs. Young. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Item number four, the Board of Education Policy, B C B D, approving our minutes. I'd like to request a motion to approve both sets of minutes that are in item A, consideration of approved minutes for July seventh and July sixteenth. Requesting a motion to approve. The motion has been made by Ms. Young, second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Schumaker. Discussion? No discussion, all in favor? It is unanimous. Trustee District Review. Number one, the trustee travel report. Above the truck, we had the opportunity to attend Mississippi School Board Association's conference in Biloxi, Mississippi, and we like to share at this time. Mr. Sparks did attend, Mr. Spears did attend, Ms. Young and myself. Dr. Schumaker was unfortunately not able to at that time. Ms. Young?
Yes, I of course attended several of the sessions that they had. There's one that I was involved in particular that really caught my interest. It was mainly, a lot of the focus on the session was about equity for all students, defining equity between the difference between equity and inequality, making sure that everyone is treated the same. And of course, they provide in-depth studies and information and research towards setting goals and standards for our children to meet their needs from an equity standpoint. And also looking at the primary focus, being student achievement, and not taking our eyes off of that. Sometimes, as board members, we were challenged to definitely reset and flip the switch, so to speak, especially when we were starting schools on a learning deficit, you know, with COVID happening, understanding how to meet the children, the needs of our children as it relates to cultural changes, growing up in underserved homes, making policies that are relevant for, to meet those needs of underserved students. Also, they went into the equity side. There must be unconditional love, you know, from our teachers, administrators, and knowing our wide purpose and why we serve children. All students are not the same. And the most, the thing that stuck with me the most is students account for success in more underprivileged areas. It must start with love, courage, and understanding. And as leaders, I was compelled to just write down a few things that I thought, and I reflected on that statement alone. Equity is what doing was right for all children all the times, no matter what the circumstances saw. That really stuck with me, and I want to make sure that we are able to continue that work even more.
Thank you. I attended also, and I have got some notes here, but I'll just share. Miranda Beard is one of our national presidents, and I love to hear her speak. And she did speak on equity and excellence in education. But she said something that stayed with me. Said, "All school, as school begins, our children must feel unconditional love." And as a teacher, you know, years, years ago, I still feel like we still have to have unconditional love if we are going to make a difference in a child's life. And at the very end of the conference, not too long time, a gentleman named Dimitri Ward, he's an ex-school board member, but he's a very young guy. And he started speaking. He said, "I'm not coming for the grownups. I'm coming for the children." And I could relate to him because I'm on the school board for the kids here in the district. And then he said, "If we educate our children, we emancipate them. Emancipate them. We give them, we're teaching them a mind to think for themselves, to apply what they've learned to their futures in their lives, to set goals and expectations for themselves." And then, what I know from the convocation that we had on Thursday, from that convocation, we had a group of students that did a musical, I'll say, presentation. They were singing and rapping, and I was really listening at the words that they were saying. And this stayed with me. Our kids were constantly saying, "We are rising up." So if we continue to instill and push them and support them in all the ways we can, they are beginning to believe in themselves, and that's what it takes, them believing in themselves. And with that, Dr. Schumaker would like to add something.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Yeah, I was not able to attend. Actually, I chickened out, because of COVID. I confess, I chickened out. However, I had the, I was lucky enough because I didn't attend down in Biloxi. I was able to go to the two initial parent meetings, parent community meetings that were held on Monday, the nineteenth of July, and Tuesday, the twentieth. And I think we have a lot of parents with us tonight, and I hope y'all were able to attend those as well because they were excellent. I have to give a major shout out to Dr. Lavat and also to Dr. Dito, who chaired it because Dr. Lavat was in Biloxi at our meeting, which was obviously important to have her at a school board meeting for not just Mississippi, but also Arkansas and Louisiana. And Tennessee, too? Okay, I didn't realize that. But anyway, these two meetings were excellent. One was held at what used to be Palmer Home down in South Side. It's now Seasons of Columbus, which is a fantastic reuse of that facility and that space. And I think, talking with Deborah Taylor from the Columbus Housing Authority, it is going to be a game changer for that area of town. Lots of great things going on down there. And also, on North Side, it was at the Boys and Girls Club, again, a major sort of light for that area of town. At both of these, Dr. Dito conducted the meeting, and it was full floor. All the principals were there. They went over everything from what is social or emotional learning, which is going to be so important this year as our students come back, to all the great new programs we're going to be doing, talking about coding, athletics, all sorts of things we're doing with the arts, fine arts, things like that, after-school programs that we've got coming up that are going to be so important for getting our students back into the swing of schools, special services. Ms. Johnson did a super job on child nutrition. And then, of course, took questions from the parents. So shout out, even though I couldn't go to this other one, I'm so glad I was able to go to this to see all the things that the district is planning for this exciting new school year.
That's great. Thank you, Ms. Young and Dr. Schumaker, for sharing. Now we'll move to item number two, which is Discussion of Capital Improvement Plan for C M S D. Welcome, Ms. Little.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
You should have a paper in front of you that has got a list of everything we've got that's taken away from and added to in a week or so. Color-coded charts have all been updated, and so I think it was a week ago. And I update it every so, so often, to send it out. That should color-code the charts once we've completed what we're working on. This is pretty much right here. This is everything that we have already. I've got the O's for it, and we've got it scheduled, or scheduled, some of them.
Did you email us a copy of the updates on the color code? Did you email a copy?
I do have it, I will send it out tomorrow.
Okay.
You'll get it tomorrow.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Little, could you, since we don't have anything on the screen for our folks out here tonight, could you quickly go over the items here for us, just so everybody can share in the good news?
We have about eleven items right now that we're working on. We have some pressure washing at several schools. Put the new intercom system in at the high school. Have some more pressure washing at the high school in the pillar. We're going to be doing some woodwork and some painting and freshening up at Franklin Elementary. We've got some concrete that we're going to be working on at the middle school. We're going to be redoing the basketball gym floor at the high school, putting the new emblems down on there also. We've got some painting at Parker at Jug Coop that we'll be doing on the outside. We're going to be removing some bleachers and some old storage buildings from the high school. And we're going to be updating the speakers and sound systems, like the football field, the baseball field, the softball field, and the basketball gym.
And I did have one question about the public address system at the high school. How, I know we've been working on that for a while. Do you have any idea on completion date for that?
Right now, the intercom system is working in the classrooms and the hallways. What we're working on now is intercom, like phones. We've also put in for, as they walk around with the walktops, that they can do a call from anywhere in the school from the walktop. So we've just got a few more things that we're just working out as we go. But the main intercom system for speakers for the classrooms and the hallways are complete.
Thank you, that's super.
Well, can you elaborate on what you're doing at the athletic complex? That's number one and number two.
Number one and number two, that is, number one is pressure washing of the bleachers and all the concrete areas. Once they finish at the high school, they'll be moving to the athletic complex. The development is the reworking of the press box.
And what about the lights?
Lights are complete.
Great, and we've got enough bulbs, or we rewired, correct?
Every single light bulb.
Okay. Yes.
I have another question, Ms. Young. Are there pressure washing in the football field, be ready for game time?
We're going to be pushed, but we're going to start on the bleachers first. I think they look worse than the concrete does. So hopefully, within the next couple of days, they'll be starting. It's going to be pushed, hopefully, they'll be mostly fixed.
Okay. And you mentioned the speakers, the sound system in the basketball gym. We're looking at addressing that also.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, very good. Appreciate you for all your work. Thank you very much, Ms. Little. We're moving on to item three, Discussion of Pump Campus Recovery, Review of Expenditures and Reimbursement Payments for Project. Dr. Lavat?
Do you have the current pump building transactions? We discussed some of these issues last week at the review meeting, but Ms. Rogers has prepared that document. If you all have any questions, we can proceed.
I think that Mr. Taylor Gild is our architect, and he did an excellent presentation last Wednesday to the board, very in-depth. He explained basically what they will be doing throughout the entire building in regards to the amount. We looked at our monetary figures and everything, and right now, I think that everything is moving right along. Wouldn't you say, Mr. Himmle?
Yes, ma'am. I'm not giving a microphone. Yes, ma'am. Just spread away on the entrance.
That's good.
That's good.
Thank you, Mr. Himmle. Moving on to contract renewal updates. Board, do you have any questions or concerns regarding our contract renewals that are listed? Moving on, goal updates, the safety report. Moving right along, item number two, Dr. Lavat's update.
I am vaccinated. I'm going to remove my mask at this time to give the presentation for the Columbus Municipal School District. First, I'm going to talk about our district goals, and I have been told by Mrs. Cox to go rather quickly during this presentation. She doesn't want it to be thirty minutes. So I will go through this presentation quickly. But the number one goal for the Columbus Municipal School District is student achievement. Second is establish and maintain a safety-oriented school climate in every school, increasing the number of students in the C M S D with a positive experience, K-12 experience. We talked about that a little bit at convocation, that we want eighty percent of our students in either visual performing arts and after-school program or athletics, and we probably And we probably will be able to reach that goal. CMSD will establish partnership with parents, community. I'm going to talk about that a little later, how that's been in depth with non-rental mentoring support, and then the fiscal prudence of allocation of resources. These are our successful school district initiatives. You know, I always like to say, we started coding in 2018 with the camps and had hired a coding facilitator. Our students are receiving world-class computer computational thinking exposure. We're excited about the new year for them to get hands-on exposure coding. We will be looking into artificial intelligence and some grants with that, and also working through the new state law with the state of Mississippi with coding pre-K through 12. We are excited about our new AP courses. We have AP Statistics, Algebra III, Algebra I being taught by the Mississippi School of Math and Science. We also, through the TIL Microsoft Partnership, will have AP Computer Science. We did put all of our students that were in the Mississippi Coding Academy inside of the AP Computer Science courses, so our students will be at an exposure. Secondary college and career coding inside of security, that is our collaboration with East Mississippi Community College in dual enrollment. They'll continue those courses this year and hope that they will have 12 hours towards computational thinking in college before their exit high school. Next, we have intervention support for NTSS. This is going to be an important part of learning loss for our students. We continue to engage with several of our partners to make sure this is implemented well within the school. We are focused on remediation, but on the part of the time, because we have talked about acceleration, and we'll talk about that as I go on. District-wide behavior monitors, it's going to be important. We want to be proactive. We've worked a lot with anger management, some other programs that Dr. Dito has implemented. And with our SEL support, we are hoping to mitigate some of those situations also. Next, we have our behavior interventionist and SEL support. We have a district-wide behavior interventionist. She's done an excellent job, as you've seen in convocation. We continue to have those exercises in the morning. I actually had the opportunity on Friday to go to Franklin, and the teacher had a safari, and they had, they were looking for giraffes. You know, I always go to pre-k in kindergarten, and it was so cute, but I'm glad that she's doing some of those exercises to relax the minds of our students as they return to a traditional school year. We have our academic coaches that continue to give academic support to our teachers and provide professional development. We have weekly data analysis. We'll start taking service assessments soon, and we'll see where our students are, because we did not test with math this year, so that we're able to accelerate their learning to get them on grade level. District-wide PBIS, attendance is so important. Had the opportunity to meet with Judge Hemphill this morning and his colleagues to talk about attendance and truancy and how important it is for our students to be in school. So we're really working with the community to make sure that our kids, they have to be in school to learn. We want to make sure that those laws are being followed. Middle school ACT preparation, that will continue to be initiative. District-wide literacy initiative, we have some things on the education agenda to get more books into our students' hands. They have, should have a library of books already, but we're continuing that initiative. And then district PL season professional development. In progress, we continue to work with college career enlistment preparation, dropout prevention. We are starting our teacher pipeline initiative with MDUW, our Future Teachers of Columbus, that is in full swing at the high school, hoping to grow our own for them to come back to this community and teach here. Excited about that redevelopment, which would be a great exercise. We've talked about the agreement. We have the annual views. We believe in getting our community living wages and opportunity for our community to get the skills needed to get higher wages. And not only that, is to give our students the opportunity to learn high-skill jobs at the redevelopment. It's going to be great for the community. We're excited about the Hunt Museum coming back and doing what's best for this community. Intensive early literacy focusing training, we continue to work with that. We have applied for the early low-level collaborative. Yes, I want 20 more pre-k kids in our school district, because with us, we can do more things to help them to become college and career-ready. We will. We did submit application to MDE in hopes to get another early learning collaborative. I even have some thoughts on where I will put those extra 20 kids, which will get us to 120, which will be great for the school district. We do have an MDE grant that we will be working on in December. That's literacy integration for 4th through 12. Generally, I'm glad that MDE are taking the next steps to work on early literacy at 4th and 12th, because at the secondary level, it gets a little difficult to start making people reading teachers, and so it's much needed, it's almost like the forgotten cause, because if students are not on grade level reading in 4th and 12th, in middle school and high school, it's very difficult for them to teach reading. So this is a great, grand project that we're with, with MDE, and we're grateful to be a part of it. We have purchased high-quality instruction material, excited about implementation there. Campaign for grade level reading, we're still in progress of completing that application and getting more feedback to submit it for the community. That will be the Columbus community at large. We continue to work on literacy integration. We did get digital technology support in three of our schools from MDE. They will be at Cook Elementary, Columbus Middle School, and I think SELL Elementary. So we'll have digital training. We have applied for some other initiatives that's going to help us with blended learning so that our teachers will be able to use technology more innovatively and support the one-on-one initiative. Technology professional development, Newslove is supported because we want our students to have exposure to grade-level texts, operational graduation. We do have our next community accountability meeting, reform in public education is happening. We want to be on the front edge of it, and we are definitely excited about our meeting tomorrow with community accountability. We have our ninth grade at-risk students with our Falcon Academy. We've done a great job at that this summer, the Falcon Academy with six through eight students. Continue to have professional development with vertical alignment, and our students took the Questar pilot that is exposing to the math assessment. Are there any questions? This is the things that we're dealing with, doing to mitigate learning loss, most of them have to do with literacy, grade-level texts. One of the most important things we're doing is a year-long after-school program, hoping that our parents sign up for that. We have Chinese, we have so many great interactive things that are on contract, consistent agenda to expose our students to. Some of these things are very, very similar, focus on grade-level text and text-based questioning, continue to have SEL and math support. Math is a low area, which has been a low area throughout the country, but we're working strategically to make sure we have more math training, MTS training, resources for intervention, development of teacher leaders, rigor in student relationship. We talked about a lot of this at convocation. Enrichment, we are going to continue to expose students and bring the world to the classroom through their devices and blended learning and innovation with instruction. Going fast enough, Ms. Cox? Okay. All right. This is some pictures of the first day of school. This is convocation. Those teachers are still smiling about convocation. If you missed it, I'm sorry. It was great. And then I'm so excited about our partnerships with Columbus Air Force Base. They were everything to school, greeting our students. And I also wanted to show our new monitoring system right here. Our students can tag their hand and take their temperature when they walk in the building, and it's really expedited, especially at the middle school and high school, them getting into the building. Even during the hybrid schedule, it would take us a long time because of the buses to get our students in and to get them in, and it's a metal detector at the same time. So thank you to Dr. Dito and his departments for getting that innovative technology into all of our buildings to ensure that all of our students are safe. We appreciate it. Okay, so those are some of the pictures, but then here's cuties. There we go. So you know I always go to pre-k. I'm impartial, I do love our babies. But that's the safari that I talked about, and it was so cute to watch them, and it was part of the SEL support that she decorated the building, and the kids were wanting to walk with the binoculars. I'm sorry you missed that, too. It was absolutely fabulous. And then this is our kids playing grocery store. It's so funny, the things that they talk about when they're playing in the store, but it was wonderful. But that's, playtime is very important for their mental learning. We talk a lot about that, but SEL, this type of learning is important. This is our kids lining up bathroom breaks. I don't want to feel like I'm impartial pre-COVID, I really am, but I enjoyed seeing them today on Friday, and those are just some pictures from the first days of school. This is our current accountability rating for all the schools from 2018. And I couldn't say enough that we really have to stay focused on academics. The school's underperform, district is underperform for the last 13 years. We're moving forward in the right direction. We want to continue to improve that. Instructional focus and acceleration. We talked about the brain being the magnificent muscle, and our kids have the capacity to learn at high levels. So our focus is on acceleration, making sure our students are getting rigorous grade-level instruction. We've purchased a lot of instruction material to make sure they have that. Access to daily complex texts, standard-based instruction, high expectations of student learning, instructional coaching and feedback, a culture of excellence, that we demand excellence for our students and the resources they need, and a focus on strategic planning, and students focused on leadership. So giving them roles to be advocates of their own learning. Goal number four is establish partnerships. We've continued to have workshops to pre-k, and we continue to give resourcing information to our constituents. These are some of our outreach programs. We did have an outstanding turnout for our prayer walks through our school. We appreciate all the community's work coming in and really giving us all the support and love the district needs as we return to a traditional schedule. I think Ms. Cox and Ms. Young participated, I participated, and it was just a great event to have prayer at school, I feel, over our schools. It was really wonderful. We will have an education economics meeting in the upcoming month. I'll have some more information later to talk about the economic disparities within the county as it relates to working people, living wages, and the important aspects of things we have to do as a district to support our community. I think the data from Trivialize is going to be very eye-opening to all the community. And now that we have a public relations person, I have delegated that to her. So very excited about that. We are planning our quarterly literacy meeting that we had this summer. There'll be another campaign to get them adequate, seeing what they need to improve literacy among our students. We'll continue, we will have a college-at-home meeting for non-traditional and first-generation students with the W. We'll be asking Ms. President Nora Miller to come and facilitate that process of how people who work part-time and finish their four-year degree. Our focus for 2021, 2022 is to accelerate social emotional wellness and continue to innovate and move forward.
Good evening. The federal programs, it's been a busy month. We actually hired a new federal programs director, Ms. Emma Carnwall, if you want to raise your hand. She will be taking the reins as we move forward, along with, you know, the transition process. Dr. Page has actually come in and has been wonderful in helping transition. We still will be looking at some leadership from Dr. Page on federal programs. However, right now, what we've worked on is the FY19 revisions, worked with equitable shares for the FY22 school year. Now, that FY22 is actually going to be a new project. As title goes, you have three-year cycles. So we're getting ready to start this new cycle on FY22. So it's going to be a whole different program. However, we're going to use some of the programs that we already have in place. We're going to incorporate those in that plan to move forward, but we will be having some different things also added to that. We also reviewed feedback from MDE with ESER II. Now, ESER II is currently one of the fundings that we're doing with COVID right now. That is, that's coming down the pipeline. We're in the process of spending ESER II. However, ESER III is also getting ready to come in play. We did get our allocation for ESER III. We still have to do our planning and project for the ESER III, which is actually correlating with fiscal year '22 and ESER III all at the same time. So we got our work cut out for us when it comes to the federal programs. As far as ESER II, we have completed the revisions for ESER II. One of, some of the things that we are purchasing are some more laptops, instructional software, and we're funding professional development also with that ESER II fund. Now, keep in mind, ESER II, you have to put a certain percentage away for learning loss, and that is one of the things that we do with the instructional software, professional development, and the laptop, is try to address the learning loss that the students are having due to, you know, the COVID and being in on that hybrid schedule. So we're looking at also working with the curriculum department so that we can show the after-school needs in regard to teacher quality and making sure that teachers are, you know, being able to come in and do the work that we need them to do. We're going to have after-school planning and some summer school meetings. So summer next year will be one of the things that we're going to be looking forward to and working on that. Just like this year, we had pretty overwhelming participation with summer school, and we had some people that weren't able to get in due to the fact that some of our teachers, we didn't have, you know, all the teachers were not being able to work this summer, so we couldn't accommodate as many students as we really wanted to. However, we're going to try to prepare and plan ahead to do that this summer. Also, we looked at providing principles with expenditure budgets so that they can oblige their funding from the FY19 and FY through the '21 school year. We do have our ESER III surveys online right now, and it is very important that you can provide feedback on how you would like for us to spend that month. When you look at surveys online, those surveys are something that we really rely on the community, rely on the students, the faculty and staff to complete those surveys so that we can get a, I guess you would say, gauge what we need in the community and what we use the funding for those meetings. Under the Transportation Department, now, when we talk about transportation, August has been a challenging year. This has been a challenging start for the '21, '22 school year. Friday was a long day. I'm not, you know, making any excuses. It was a long day, but we, our number of drivers is really low. Keep in mind, we had 11 drivers that ran both morning and afternoon route. We had four drivers that run only the morning route. That was to add to that 11, so you're looking at 15 drivers. And you have one driver that only runs the afternoon route. So when you think about that, that's 12 drivers. Three sped buses are running. So if you ever, if you look at the number of drivers, we had 19 drivers on Friday that, you know, worked, and I'm going to say it this way, they did their due diligence in trying to accommodate the 33,000 students that we do have in Columbus Middle School District. And I feel like, you know, getting them home and getting them home safely without any accident, they get an excellent job. The reason that was, that we noticed that is that, again, we started out last year, we ended the year with 25 drivers. We have now 19 drivers. We need drivers. We really do. The reason noted, though, we had some of them resign because of the fact that they had other jobs, and some of them resigned because they had medical reasons. So we can't, you know, say that we don't need them, we do need them. Several drivers were interviewed, offered jobs, however, they never completed the paperwork to be recommended to the board. So we're still in that situation. Now, bus staff, we have actually ordered three buses of the 11 buses that really was approved to be ordered by the state. And those three buses are coming from our ESER II funds. One of the things that we can do in ordering the extra buses was to try to mitigate and try to social distance. So we're trying to get buses on our fleet. We still going to need drivers to drive those buses. So it's a catch 22, but we're working diligently to try to get those drivers in. We have several buses that we do have at Waters right now that are becoming road-ready, 1420, 34, all in the process of getting road-ready. Buses 1901 and 33 are actually also at one, being repaired. 1601 has an AC, is getting an AC plant repaired. 1803 is getting a QLS system repaired. The Falcon buses up and running, however, you got the front air conditioning is not working, the rear air conditioning is working. So we're trying to work diligently to get that front AC working. And then we are... And then we are, we are looking at a building to our transportation department and the management department, and that's going to be something that we are recommending to our, well, our superintendent will be recommending to our board. Thank you, Dr. Page.
I'll be real fast. Power School, SIS implementation, so we moved from Chaco line out to Power School. That is live, we did the big vibes with the implementation team calls it. Still working on some of the contact data, just cleaning that up. And then the third-party integrations, you know, it syncs with Mosaic, which is our competition software, syncs with School Messenger, Clever, so on and so forth. I prioritize the most important ones and then some of the other ones I'm still working on. Some of them are easier than others, just takes time to get done as we work through the first of the year tickets, which are just an onslaught. First one laptops, those have been ordered, they should be here hopefully by this week. We, yeah, that'd be really good to have those, once they're here, they should be just ready to roll out immediately. I'm working with website redesign team, this week's been my first call with them. Like I said, maybe the month or two process. Put in some orders for a couple upgrades throughout the district, especially the AP equipment area. And, yeah, I'm setting to pick up for all the old hardware. I think I picked up about 2,000 old laptops, 30, 40 TVs. I mean, just onslaught, like I think they're going to have to bring a Mac truck to pick up this stuff. So I'm very, very happy to get that, get all those assets up. And that's it.
Ms. Young have a question?
Yes.
What are we on the website design call for?
That's what, that's what I said, I had my first meeting with them this week.
Pardon?
I had my first meeting with that team this week.
Oh, okay, the redesign, that's it?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. It'll take about a month or two, I think. That's the broadest of it, because we have to do every website in the district. So once it gets done, we'll go live. The current website will stay active. It's not like we're going to be without a website at any point. But for the whole new site to be out there rolled out, probably not much too. But I'll know more next week.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Tiffany Lanier, I am the social education director. As far as social education, look, this school year, we started the school year at the beginning of August with professional development opportunities for our teachers. Some of the topics that we covered this school year thus far are the roles and responsibilities of our special education teachers, ways to mitigate classroom behaviors inside of the classroom. Another area we also touched bases on was co-teaching. We do look forward to working with the general education teachers as well as the special education teachers as a whole as the year goes on to do more training and professional development in co-teaching.
Mr. Sparks have a question quickly?
Yeah, I have a question. A world-winning staff when it comes to the special education.
We have, all of our teachers have been hired, if the order pulls a few, that we have on the agenda tonight. There were some slides open at Cook. And not a minute, but I think we have one more position open at the high school, and I can discuss it with Mr. Chapman. But overall, we have all our positions filled in spite of those two vacancies.
Okay, can I ask you a quick question? I noticed that we had some bus monitors that resigned. Have they been replaced? Because we were talking about transportation, they have not been replaced? Thank you. Is that your report, Dr. Labatt? It's complete? All right, thank you all very much, I appreciate it. We're moving on. Item number five, open forum. Do we have anyone to sign in for open forum today? We did? We have with us a parent, a concerned parent that has signed up for open forum. And I'd like to welcome Ms. Edmonds. Mrs. Edmonds? Okay, it's one name here, LaShante? LaShay? Okay. This is on the one name on here, is there another parent?
Welcome. Hello. My name is LaShay Edmonds, and for my daughter, my daughter's name is Jerrit.
Just checking to see if you might. Hold on. Sorry.
My name is LaShay Edmonds, and my daughter's name is Jerrit. She goes to South Elementary. She goes to South Elementary. And my concern is, she's previously had cancer. She's on her medical and remission from cancer. And the buses have, they're reacquired. The, I don't know. Mr. Glenn, he said that they have 19 bus drops. My school, my daughter's school, said they only have two bus drops. Two buses running for that school. And they're running all over town with Cook, Fatton, Franklin, all those schools. She is in remission, she can't be around all of them. And no, I don't have transportation to get her back and forth to school every day. That's, that'll put way into our people car anyway. But my concern is, they opened the school back up at the people. All this COVID, Delta is worse than COVID wounds. And it's just ridiculous, I feel like, to me, and I don't know about the rest of the parents, but I feel like they should go back virtual until they get it all under control. Because it's not going to, it's not going to die down anytime soon. So that's what I was concerned about.
Okay. Let me comment first to say that, let me take this mask off for a minute myself. I am very sorry to hear about your daughter's surgery and what you're going through. And please be encouraged and know that we here in the district, we are here to support you. With your daughter having, being in remission, there are several, there are some additional services that the district may have that you may benefit from. If you could just please contact one of our district administrators. I'm sure that they will advise you as to what the district can do to help you at this particular point in your and your daughter's lives, especially with the COVID that's in that Delta environment that is in right now, just is critical, more critical, I would say. And her current condition is something that we really need to monitor. But I won't elaborate in depth on that. But there are other, I'll say, ways that our district will be able to help you with your particular circumstance. Now, I can't address that. When it comes to the, the district coming, going to school in person, in-person school, one thing that the State Department, and we'll, Dr. Labatt, I'm sure will elaborate further on this, is the fact that in-person school, we see the learning loss that our children have, I'll say, have been dealing with. And a lot of them are really regressed. And we understand that the online, the hybrid, and sometime in-person. You know, sometimes our children have more, I'll say, areas that they need more additional help with, that is sort of difficult to offer online. But in person, excuse me, with one-on-one task analysis, documenting progression, and going back and remediating immediately, and the child learns to listen at a particular teacher. And that teacher also, while she's teaching that child, then the child, you'll see your child making more and more progression. I, I can't make a decision, we can't, as to where, what I, you know, what will happen with the Delta virus. But I do know that as a part of our in-school document that the administrators pulled together that they had to have into the State Department in May. And one good thing that I'll say for our administrators, they pulled a complete thorough in-person package together. And it is on the district's website, if you get a chance to read over it. And it says that in there, there's a line to that it lets us know, see, I'm looking at myself as a parent too, okay? It lets us know that if this gets to a particular point where we're going back to where we were, let's say, last year this time, then those decisions will be made. Dr. Labatt, would you like to elaborate in depth with that, please?
Yes. Ma'am, President, it's the ESER2 and 3 money that Dr. Dito talked about in the May contingency plan that was due on the website, the reason that we were given over $35 million is for in-person learning. It gave us the money to push through the virus. We will still continue to make decisions in the best interest of our students, but the money was given to mitigate COVID-19 in order for our students to be in school. I've been concerned about things in the community and the things that our children have dealt with this summer, and they need to be in school, they want to be in school. And that was an important decision for us. You never have to worry about me making a decision that's not in the best interest of their safety, it will not happen with me. I was one of the first people in the state, us and our team decided our students are going to wear masks, because their safety is important to us. If we talk about last year with the hybrid schedule, our kids went to school 90 days if they weren't quarantined and did not catch the coronavirus. And then they had a week of a snowstorm. So you're looking at our kids being in school less than 80 days in a year and a half. Academically, long-term, trust us, they need to be in school. Virtual learning is not an option that's optimal for children to learn, to get the social, emotional support that they need. And I don't just talk from a place of being a superintendent, I'm speaking of research. Research-based practices is best for children. I think that even as we work through learning loss, it will still take over five years to try to get where we need to be. And if we continue to, we just have to continue on where we are. We are watching the virus, I read about Lambda this weekend, so Delta, Lambda is coming, right? And so I stay abreast on the most recent research in medical journals and education journals to make sure that we're making the very best decisions for our students. But just trust that we're making the best decision. But our federal money is contingent, the reason we had to put the report on it is because the money is for us to have in-person learning. So they want us to mitigate every situation so that students are in school. It is not just me, it is the President of the United States, it is the Secretary of Education, it's the Mississippi Department of Education, who has a current policy that makes virtual almost just very difficult, because they know how important it is. It is for the long-term great opportunities that we want our students to have in the future. And if, you know, I can go into the research in depth, but we are making the very best decisions for our children.
And throughout the summer, we, the board, and some of the board members can contest and respond to this, we've monitored what I'll say, Mrs. Somerville with the custodians, she and her team, the schools are ready, the schools are clean, the classrooms are safe for our children. If, say, if you're worried about your child being as safe in the classroom as your child would be, let's say, at home doing the work, it's just as safe in that classroom. Mrs. Johnson and her team, well, you know that they've always been given breakfast and lunch and different dinners all throughout this period. But they're prepared to give them a very good breakfast, good lunches, and sometimes they even do the sack carry home for our kids, just in case they want a snack or something before the parent gets there and prepares dinner. I look at what the teachers are doing, the in-classrooms, the way that threw the estrophones. Well, when I was teaching, I wish we had estrophones, so I could have a computer lab set up for my kids, so I can walk them through individual lessons. The way that our teachers are able to do it now, I feel really good. I'm not trying to straighten, you know, on how you may feel about it, but I'm talking from if it was my own child, that I would be very relaxed. As a matter of fact, I'd be good about what our district is really doing to prepare ourselves for our kids. I think so. Board members, you all have to say anything? Any comments?
I've got one more thing.
Yes, ma'am?
Classrooms are ready, the schools are ready.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm speaking on behalf of someone that couldn't be here, I can't say, I don't want to say her name. But her grandson had to get sent home today from Fatton because he, him and his classmates had been supposed to come. Just today, two hours after she had dropped him off, she had to go back and get him.
I can't respond to that, I'm not aware of that, ma'am. Dr. Labatt?
We will be reporting our COVID numbers to the Mississippi Department of Health and to the board starting this week. But I just want to go over the incubation period for COVID-19. So a lot of the cases that we've gotten in the last two days have to have come from the community inside the building. And so we won't be reporting those numbers until Monday. But it's just like last year, COVID-19 is here, and we'll continue to work through the process much like we did the hybrid schedule.
Me, myself, who would want to talk to a student if they're virtual? I cannot expose her to.
Okay, just go ahead, you put your information back there, you put your phone number, and then we'll get back to you. Thank you.
Okay, hold on, my mom, let me see if she's finished. Mrs. Edmonds? I tell you, if you'd like to speak, I think, would you just come up to the podium and I'll write your name in? One at a time, please? Yes, sir?
Hello, my name is Mario Murray.
Mario Murray?
Yes, ma'am.
And it appears that we have some parents that would like to speak with us. Would you just wait? And I need one of the board members, if you will, we'll have to put a timeframe on the comments. Dr. Schumate, will you, let's say, two to three minutes? Is that appropriate, board members? Three, is this all right? All right, the board is comfortable with three minutes. So we'll do three minutes for each parent, okay? If you'd like to speak. And please, please feel free, parent community, that we are here to listen to help you through this. Yes, sir?
One of my main concerns is the bus transportation. Name wrong, Dr. Twain Diago, I believe it was.
Dito?
Dito, apologies. We spoke on the buses. Obviously, there's a deficit of drivers. My question is, what is being done to actually recruit or, and also retain the drivers? You know, is it being as feasible as it is presented? The Dr. Labatt? Labatt, my apologies. Labatt spoke of, you know, the president and so much money being kicked around, but I think... but I think one of the most important things is to get the kids to school, so.
Well, we have some incentives set in. Dr. Dito, would you like to speak on that?
Please.
Doctor Labat?
We have a proposal today to raise the salaries of our bus drivers to recruit, retain more bus drivers. Uh, and I want to thank the Transportation Department for doing a great job. We did have a forge major last year because you cannot pay a company for services not rendered during the pandemic. Our district had to take the bus services in, and I think our district has done a great job of bringing the buses in. And we'll continue to work through the process. Um, the bus services have been contracted for, I know, over five years and now taking it into the district. We're going to have to work through the complexity of getting the things that we need, but we are working through those processes. But there is, it will cost the district approximately a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars for this initiative, but it is on the agenda for today. Thank you.
How long do we expect it to be a deficit on drivers versus students?
That's an unpredictable thing. You know, you have to have a CDC license. And so we've been advertising all summer, so we can't predict that. So we can raise the salary, but we just don't know. I can't say that five people will apply. We'll just continue to mitigate through the circumstances. I will say that as a, um, a twenty-year educator and being a middle school principal for a decade, the first two weeks of school, I was at the principal at buildings from six to six-thirty P.M. during the first week or two of school. So some of these things are normal. We'll work out the process. And as we recruit more employees in the next two weeks, that these things will work out themselves. It's general, I was talking to Ms. Witter. She said, when her kids were in Columbus when she was here, the buses came late. So we'll continue to work through the process and work with our parents diligently to make sure that's taken care of.
Okay, so as far as, I understand, things take time and these things have to somewhat resolve themselves. And one of the biggest things that you all have stressed is the kids being in the classroom. But now, not only that, the kids also need to be at home. Now, one of my biggest points is, I have a daughter who attends Columbus Middle School. I spent forty minutes in the line this morning. Then when we get to the line, you still have to take the temperature. They line up before they can even go into school. Now, by the time all this resides or whatever, they miss most of their first period class. So once again, you know, you're stressing being in the classroom, but are they really being in the classroom, you know? So it's just one of them things, you know, me as a parent, I'm concerned as just how diligently are we working to, uh, be proactive in all things, not just, you know, politically, but from an actual standpoint, from a parent as well. Because I don't want to see my child coming home at six in the afternoon when they have to be in bed at eight to get ready for the next school morning as well. So that's my thing is just the time, and logic, not, you know, more. We can speak statistics, but it is statistics, you know, but what are we actually doing other than reading the numbers? What are we actually doing? And that's my thing. Um, you say you're, you're actually, we're giving more money to the bus drivers, but what are we actually doing to recruit some of the bus drivers that are not going to actually come and drive, but to stay as well? You know, we have to attain and sustain because we hire drivers and they're just quitting. And what is the proposal that you guys are giving? Because once, we all can agree the kids need to be in school. And at this point, the bus drivers, they are the messengers. So what are we really doing to put that emphasis to make sure, at this point, that the bus drivers are more important than the teachers are? So what are we really doing to make sure that the bus drivers not only come, but they stay as well? And that's my only question. You know, the biggest one, and not only that, uh, once again, how long? I know it takes time to work things out, but I think that is a serious question we should be approaching with very thorough diligence. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We, we also, uh, we'll have CDL classes for, or anybody that's interested in becoming a bus driver, we held those this summer. So if you're interested in getting your CDL license, continue to have classes to recruit.
Uh, what she was saying is that if you are or know of someone that is interested in driving the buses, that we do have the training classes and the application, uh, it is open. We are seeking bus drivers. And, uh, if you know of anyone, uh, you see where there is a need, you know, uh, please follow. But thank you very much. I appreciate your comment and your concern because, um, I'm not there at the schools, but listening to you, uh, I can, I could visualize really what you were talking about. So thank you very much for sharing that with us. And, uh, what we'll do as a board is that we are responsible for monitoring and overseeing the, uh, policies that are set for our school district and that the procedures are carried out. So through those manners, we will be monitoring, uh, this also. Thank you very much. I appreciate your concern. Do we have another parent? Yes, ma'am. Oh, she jumped up. Yes, ma'am.
No, I, I, I know.
Can I get your name, please?
My name is Tori Smith.
Hold on, Gloria Smith.
Yes, ma'am. I used to be a bus driver here, but Dr. Hill, he's really trying to do all that he can do with this transportation. But once again, I feel like it needs to be virtual still because the buses cannot put it. First off, the pay is not right. Because when I came in, he asked me to deal super costs. Fourteen hours an hour is not enough. The reason why I say that because I've been driving there since I was eighteen, age of twenty. So therefore, I'm made twenty dollars an hour. So the buses are very important, just as well as the teachers. Because when you don't have the buses, the kids can't get there because parents work. So I want you guys just to keep that in mind for, because when you deal with that, there's going to be a dropout rate. A dropout rate is going to come because the kids can't get to the schoolhouse, and then the kids start feeling unsafe. It's not fair for a kid to be down at six in the afternoon. So maybe you guys can keep some money in the budget for the buses, because buses are very important. And we paying taxes for them. And I just want to thank all y'all for doing what y'all doing. But it's more to just sitting here. I'm talking about the front end on actually sitting for myself. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate those comments. We've made note to, uh, another parent? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Rosemarie Carrillo.
Rosemarie Carrillo.
And I'm just going to say this. I know every parent here probably has a story or a situation. And, and I've got a pre-K and a second grader, so to have to try to mitigate getting them to and from school. But as the other gentleman said, I literally today waited fifty minutes to drop my daughter off at Franklin. And by the time I picked them back up, I waited another fifty minutes to pick her up from Franklin to go all the way to Joe Cook, to have my daughter wait twenty more minutes. So it was an hour and a half, literally, to get both my, my children. But that's not my concern. I can kind of mitigate getting both of my elementary students to and from school before I have to be at work at eight o'clock. But my issue is, I have a high schooler that is, that is a ninth grader, and I have yet, with the second day of school, a bus has yet to pick him up or bring him home. So I don't know what to do in that regard because they changed the times. And had he been at school earlier, I maybe could have gotten and dropped off, but I can't even drop him off before having to be at work at eight A.M. So I don't know necessarily what to do in regards to that. And then being told today that if he can't get to and from school, I don't know if, um, Judge Enhill can, can attest to this, but truancy will become an issue for those parents who cannot get their children to and from school. If I drop him off, I don't want to be concerned. He didn't get home until seven oh five after a family member was able to get off of work and able to go wrap him because me being a single mom of five, I have two jobs. So I just have to balance, and I just need to know if, what are we going to do now that the milk is filled? And I understand issues in the first weeks of school. I was a former district employee, so I have empathy and I understand. But I just want to know, as a parent now, what is it that we are going to do? Because like I said, here we go tomorrow. I don't have any clue where, what buses he's supposed to get on. I don't, I don't, I have no transportation information. And I have called a couple of times, and unfortunately, I'm sure the phones are ringing off the hook at the central office. So I haven't been able to even get that information, and nobody at the high school was able to provide that information. So I don't necessarily even know what to do in regards to that. So I just, I would just need an answer on how to get my man together.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comment and your concern. You know, it's one good thing about just coming together and talking through things. Sometimes when we sit down and we talk through, we are able to see what we can do likewise to help each one of you in your, each, in your individual needs as well as our collective needs altogether. So, yes, ma'am, welcome. Can I get your name, please?
It's Patricia Bova.
Patricia Bova.
I'm here like any other parent about transportation. Um, I have three at Joe Cook and one at the middle school. And Joe Cook is doing an excellent job as far as my children in, at, in home from school they go to, at the school program. But my middle school son, the first day I know yesterday I had a complication, but it was six-thirty at night. Um, I went to school. I waited in line over thirty minutes. Um, they got his name, they called. Everyone has a walkie-talkie. They're able to contact the other person in school to call for the student. So they contacted them, and I was sitting there and sitting there and sitting there for me to get to the front, for them to tell me my son wasn't in there. So I'm like, okay, where's, where's my child? And they said, can you just pull up here? You know, and I'm like, where, where is he? And they couldn't tell me what bus he was on or anything like that. My niece stayed, the area that he's supposed to go to at the school, which I pay for after school program, and he's not able to come because of the bus situation. I worked, just like any other parent worked, just like the school board worked. And I can't get off. I, I deliver. I deliver a, a, almost an hour away. I can't get here at three-thirty, three-forty-five to get him, you know, from there and take him somewhere else. But, um, it was just, it, it was really a mess. My niece was told to get off the bus because they don't deliver in that area. But the school gave her that bus number for her to get on every day. But the day she got on, she had to get out. So where does that leave the children? And they don't want them to use the cell phone. I understand about the cell phone policy, but if you have a hundred children in the school, how are they going to be in contact with parents? The school did not contact parents that day, no one. And all of us are sitting here waiting on our children. That's, that's a scary situation. Some children have been dropped, two children were dropped off at the high school. Parents were looking for their children. And of course, everyone knows that the child does not live at the high school. So it's just, something needs to be done. It needs to be done quickly and not wait till the last minute. A faculty blast is sent out a lot. You all call a lot, and I understand, you know, because y'all have to get the information out. But sometimes, some things just at the last minute. And we, parents, we need to know ahead of time so that we can, you know, if I have to make arrangements, like tell my boss, hey, I, I, maybe I need to cut off my route at the same time so I can get here, because my children are more important than my job. But it just needs to be more communication. At the middle school, like I said, a lot of us are being late for work every morning. A lot of jobs, they give out points every day. They're not going to, you know, okay, well, we're not going to give you a point today just because you, you have to wait to take your child. But it, it's affecting all of us, not just students, but everyone in the community as a whole.
Thank you, thank you very much. Um, our, uh, board members, you all have any comments that you all would like to make at this time? Oh, another parent, please come up, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Barbara Walters.
Barbara.
Barbara, like the new sister. So I think everybody's made some excellent points about transportation and the deficits that there have been over the past two days of school. Um, one of the things I want to kind of add on to that, I have, I have a five-year-old. Um, she had her first day of kindergarten on Friday. She, her birthday was in July. She is one of the smallest kids in, in the, uh, in the classroom. You guys are talking about unconditional love, showing unconditional love for our kids, how we need to protect our smallest children. My five-year-old was on the bus for two hours until she was dropped off at her after-school care program, where I had been waiting for her for half an hour. I mean, it is terrifying to go pick up your child from an after-school care program and find out that she is not there. And then, I mean, this is, this is her first day of school ever. So her impression of her first day of school, which she, she should, it's kindergarten. She should be loving school. It should be play. It should be meeting new people. It should be exciting. The bus should not be a scary thing that she has to spend two hours on. Because I got a call from the teacher at three fifteen saying that they had just loaded her from Cook. Two hours. By the time she got off that bus, she was terrified. She was scared. She had had an accident. She was humiliated. And that is the impression that you guys gave her because you guys did not have the bus situation set together. What are we doing to protect our youngest children, our youngest students, from having to experience that? She was one of the last children dropped off on the route. And I understand that there, these bus drivers are working long hours and they are taking multiple routes. There are no bus aides, so she is there as a five-year-old. The bus driver has to manage not only a screaming, terrified, needing to go to the bathroom five-year-old, but also drive the bus safely. That's not an acceptable, that's not an acceptable situation. And I am sure that my child is not the only one who had to do that. We need to protect all of our youngest children and the older ones, too. This, this is, so something needs to be done now because clearly, parents being able to drop off and pick up is not an acceptable short-term or long-term solution. Um, waiting for bus drivers to be hired by raising salaries, this is the first I've heard of it, because I've been looking. So, so I'm glad that you guys picked up on that suspicion. Sounds like that happened tonight. Like part of somebody, this needs to get figured out because this is not an acceptable thing. I don't want to send my, my child to school tomorrow and have to take off of work so I can go pick her up, drop her off at a program. This needs to be taken care of now. It needs to be taken care of on Friday. And I don't understand why we didn't know about this beforehand. It's not like it was a secret that you guys had to tell bus drivers.
Well, ma'am, as a board member myself, um, I can say that I don't have little children now, you know? Mine is, uh, is not at home anymore, gone, gone and gone on. But I remember those days quite clearly, what you're saying and what my concern was. Fortunately, I was able to be teaching, and I would stay there at the bus stop with him, waiting. And sometimes I was late, and my name would get circled, and I'd get written up. But I still stayed there and waited until I knew he was safe.
Yeah, drop off is not an issue.
I understand what you're saying.
Drop off is not an issue. I can drop her off in the morning. The problem is after school.
After school.
After school is my issue. I'm sure that other parents have issues in the morning. And that needs to be taken care of as well, and it's also an important issue to address.
Yes, ma'am.
But what you were speaking to is my morning issues, which I don't have. I have an issue in the afternoon. My child is getting to her after-school care program after I have already arrived to pick her up.
And, uh, this is what school again?
This was at Cook. This is at Cook, but this, but this is all a school. This is not a unique situation.
Okay.
I mean, I need, I mean.
Oh, we need to address it throughout. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so very much. Yes, ma'am. My age is Audrey Moore. Say one more time. Audrey Moore. Audrey.
I have a high school that, um, I graduated from. I got two grandkids at City. Well, Friday, my daughter was, um, picked.[1694.94]
Well, Friday, my daughter was uh picking, my grandson got on the bus. He's five. Got on the bus at two fifty. You know, we picked him up there at the high school at six fifty. He was on that bus. No one knew where he was. We couldn't get in touch with sale, the bus station, nothing. That's terrifying as well. My high school, he didn't get, he his bus didn't come to almost nine o'clock. And he called me and I worked. I get off at four uh five thirty. I go in at four thirty some points. So it's no way possible I could take my child to school. He didn't get home since six thirty. That's just unacceptable. And I'm trying to see what's gonna happen to keep that from happening because I cannot give him to school while I'm working. I I understand exactly what all the parents, all of you all are saying, and I do. But uh what I can say, I can just speak for myself. Yvonne Cox, okay? I understand where you are. I regret that this is happening to you, to our kids. These are staying on the bus so long. You know, that's hard. When a parent tells you that uh a five year old stayed on the bus and she 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 couldn't even go. That's embarrassing. And at the same time, that it's taking so long for your kids to get home because of our shortage of bus drivers. But what I can say is that everything that they bring to us as a board, we will support it. That's the part that we play in this. We will support what our adminis- our superintendent recommends to us for approval to help this, help us throughout this situation in any way we can.
Okay, my name is Rosetta Hams.
Hold on, Rosetta Hams.
I have a question now. I know Mr. Bob is saying that the team is important, but what consequences would parents have to face if our kids can't make it to school because everybody don't have cars to get their children to school? Basically, my baby's all down to middle school. That's all down forty-five. Which like on the first day, didn't nobody call me and let me know that my, you know, the bus didn't even come to the school and get him. I literally had to pick my child up like a, you know, five months for the first time. I I talked to him. He said he was gonna wait for the bus and then he called again and said that the bus driver was saying that they had too many kids on the bus, so he wasn't able to get on. But I'm basically just trying to see like what consequences would we have to face? Because I know the, if your children miss too many days, you get a letter, you have to go to court, like, how are we gonna handle that situation for the parents that can't even get their kids to school?
There there would be no consequences to the parents or students for any of the um deficits we have with transportation at all. Now, we didn't even consider that we wanted to do that. So I apologize, but they they will not receive any consequences.
Did you uh, did did everyone hear Dr. Labat? They didn't, they didn't hear you?
All parents or students without receiving consequences due to the bus delays.
Okay, let's please uh allow the other parent to speak that's there, please. Okay.
And I I apologize. That question's not a problem. Um, you know, even during the hybrid schedule, we had traffic backed up the first two or three days of school. And we just have to wait until we work out the circumstances. But we would not deliver a consequence to a to a parent or student to our issues we resolve. So it's not anything that we're gonna keep up with, but we just got have to keep continue on until we get the issues resolved, the buses.
Good evening, ma'am. My name is Kelly Turner. And I'm also disappointed um in the transportation with the school district. But I do want to start off with just overall disappointment with the school district, with the school board. Um, I'm a product of this school district. I graduated in two thousand and six. I will be celebrating um, my class will be celebrating our fifteen year uh reunion this fall. And um, my classmate here, Councilman Pierre Beard. Uh, but my concern is this issue did you did not just start last week. When it was uh the battle blast went out Thursday evening. You all knew about this over the summer. The nineteen bus drivers that we had, they didn't just disappear, reappear from the end of the school year uh back and back to now. There was a deficit back then and we should have been trying to work on that then. You knew the kids were coming back to school. You should have been doing something. Seven dollars and twenty-five cents is what I'm told that they were paid is piss poor. Excuse my language. That's not a living wage for anybody. And I paid for after school care to send my daughter to the Y C A. I work at the health department. I am a nurse. I'm working with COVID. And to have to leave my job to go pick her up from school, she's sitting there and nobody's contacting me. She can't use her phone to call. And I told her to take it because I needed to be able to get in contact with her. And it's just pitiful. It really is. So I don't know what you all are gonna do about it, but before this week, you need to get some drives.
Yes, ma'am.
Because we're sick of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, what I would like to say is, is there anybody else? Okay. Welcome.
I like you as talking about a biological parent, but I am the community parent. Consider all these children to be my own. I work with a lot of them. I pray for every single one of them. And I care about what happens in this community and I care about every single one of its parents. What I have heard is inexcusable. And I want to address the board president because I believe that's the protocol. But what I've heard is inexcusable. I've not heard one solution yet. I've not heard one definitive response yet. What I've heard is people kicking it around. I've heard it's just kind of smoothing things over. And these parents deserve specific answers to their very specific questions. That means when they ask, what are we doing to recruit bus drivers? What are you actually doing? Not just saying we're going to recruit them or we're going to raise the pay. What are you actually doing? We've lost bus drivers to the county schools. Same people that 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 drove here for twenty years are now at the county schools because they get better treatment. Because they don't have to deal with the politics of a preferred bus route. You need to poll some of these bus workers that have left over the years and ask them why they've left. Not just because of medical situations, not maybe just because they got another job, but ask them why they even sought out other employment. People who drive buses don't do it for the pay. Most of them do it because they love what they do. This is a split schedule. They have to get up at four and five o'clock in the morning. And then to have them still driving at eight o'clock at night, inexcusable. And I don't hear one solution. To say we do what's in the best interest of students is a coward response. And I'm not being personal, but I am being very, very straightforward. Because I think we gotta stop dealing with the politics in this community, stop dealing with the politics in this city, in this school district. And when we're talking about parents and their children, their most prized possession, they deserve definitive answers. To say that the school district has done a good job of recapturing this bus transportation system is a lie. I think everybody knows that that's a lie. You don't even have the building to house the buses. You don't, you haven't set aside the money in your budget to pay and to recruit and to retain bus drivers. So to say that you pulled it back in in-house and you've done a great job is a lie. And we gotta stop that. Madam Superintendent, you've got to stop that. The fact that you can't look these people in their eye and give them a definitive answer is a problem. That's a credibility issue. And we deserve more. What I'm gonna ask you to do as a definitive response is to reconsider privatizing this bus system. So that then you can deal with your number one priority, which is educating our children. That's my request. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, hold on. Hold on one second. Uh, thank you, before we start. Thank you, um, Ms. Clint there for putting this straight on the way you did. I appreciate that. Now, yes, sir, let me go back to your name, Mr.
Mario Murphy.
Gotcha, at the top.
Just one quick question. I uh wanted to elaborate on, a parent spoke about uh what is gonna be done about, you know, if their kids uh, doesn't necessarily apply to my kids, but I know there are some parents out there and maybe these can spread the word. But if a child uh isn't being picked up or hasn't been picked up, because some have it since school has started. Uh, there's gonna be a deficit on learning. Uh, homework has went out since the first day of school. Uh, and as we know, grades, you know, will be accounted for. Assignments need to be turned in. Uh, is there any way possible that maybe the teachers for the students that are not there could maybe email these kids so they can at least uh be somewhat of the part, even if they're not in the classroom? That they're not necessarily behind on what is to be expected when they are present? I think that's mo- more than, you know, a reasonable thing to ask. I don't know exactly how you guys, you know, if it's done through email, web portals or things of that nature. Uh, for the kids who can't or haven't been uh picked up or aren't attending the classroom, there needs to be something done where they can be reached and, you know, where they know what to expect when they are able to attain. Thank you.
A lot of questions that you all are asking is a lot that uh our superintendent and her staff will handle throughout their day to day responsibilities here within the district. But uh one thing that I am uh taking from this personally myself is the importance of us really prioritizing our total transportation system from the uh building that our transportation is held in to the drivers and the traveling, the schedules that our drivers are having, uh parental communication and a way of communicating with our parents under emergency circumstances. So that we all may be able to uh communicate with each other in a more positive manner. Then uh I know at the beginning of the school year, I've been an educator for years, some of you know. But uh every year you having, you will have transportation dilemmas that may happen. But with us having this large thing that's going on right now, uh I can say that we as a board, we are addressing the transportation uh toll system. That's one of the uh major items that we're talking about tonight. Several of the items on our agenda as a matter of fact. So as we move through this, please know that uh I hear you. Uh, board members, do you all have any comments that you would like to make to our parents and community constituents? All right, Mr. Beard. Okay, go on.
First and foremost, I want to say you guys are doing a great job doing what you can do with what you can do with. But uh, I'm not here as a as a councilman because we have issues of our own. You know, the old saying, sleep around your own front door. But I'm here because my mom is a bus driver. And my mom didn't go to work for it. And I asked my mom because my mom, you know, she she got three degrees, she got cosmetology license. She ain't got to work. I own the business. My grandma been on running business, y'all know. And I talk to my mama a lot and I'm getting I'm getting real personal with y'all. But I asked, I said, Mama, why you didn't go to work? She said, I've been texting the folks, but they won't text. They just stopped texting. I said, well, what what was the nature of the conversation? You know, my mom telling everybody now, this mom. But what was the nature of the conversation? Well, we been trying to get an understanding for as long as it, and and I don't know who's over the buses, so if I'm getting somebody in trouble, I'm sorry. But they just don't get, they ain't saying that. They ain't texting nobody, man. We been texting for the longest and they just would not respond to me. So I'm not done. Mama told me. Mama was upset. What's going on? But we need to get it together. Now I'm coming to y'all as Pierre, the council. Whatever I can do to assist you guys, I'm here to help. Now I'm gonna go back to my mama, son. We need to get it together. As CMST, I got first grader and a tenth grader. I pick up both of them. My wife dropped them off. So we ain't got this issue. I made a status on Facebook. I mean, well, you know, let's bear with the bus driver. You know, it was no formal fashion of taking up for nobody. First days are here. But after I talked to my mom and seen what all was going on, that first day shouldn't have been right there. This should not have been. Like I say, sweep around your own front door. So I ain't here to, you know, I'm just telling you. Appreciate y'all and all that y'all do. Y'all have a great.
Thank you. With that, uh we will uh be moving on and we do, uh our board members, if you all have any uh responses that you would like to make before we move forward. Mrs. Sparks.
Again, first of all, I want to thank all of you guys for coming out and forcing your opinion. This is what the board needs. We need to hear from you guys. That way we know what you stand on, issues that matters, not just with the transportation. But we need the same energy when it comes down to the academics as well. So just continue to keep the line of communication open between yourselves and the district as a whole. If there's something going on, let them know. Everybody's on Facebook or some form of social media. Pick the phone, make a call. It takes all of us to make a difference. And I really do appreciate the fact that you guys showed enough concern to calm down and speak on behalf of the ones that can't speak for themselves. And those are the children in this district. Thank you.
Ms. Young. I would just like to briefly say that um I have been in issues and I'm still in issues. I have a son in the district. I remember when he was four or five years old, he started his stuffs and the bus was pretty late and he was going to after school care. Um, so I do have a lot of empathy as a parent, as a board member and as a member of this community. Um, we want to also, I want to echo what Mrs. Sparks said. We want to thank you for your your caring concern to come out today, this evening and express your concerns with us. We do need to know about those issues so that we can address them. But please know that um Dr. Labat and her team, they're working diligently to get this resolved. Um, last year, you know, with COVID, people think that, you know, the privatization thing just happened. We we made that choice. But there are laws around what we can and cannot do. So this is a huge undertaking and I do agree it should have been resolved. But I do want to say I thank you for your patience. We thank you for your patience. And if you all will continue to work with us, it will be resolved.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much again for your uh for your time and really for all the comments. And believe me, I did make as many notes as I could so that I could get a clear, even a better picture. Uh, right now, we will move on to item number six, which is the office of the superintendent, Dr. Sherri Labat. Uh, superintendent travel, goal one. Dr. Labat, do you have a report on?
No travel.
Pardon?
No travel. Um, I discussed my previous travel before um at the last board meeting.
Thank you all. Item B, superintendent recommendations. Item B, second superintendent recommendations. Moving to B one, consideration and a discussion to approve the revised salary schedules, number thirty-three for transportation. Requesting a approval, a motion for approval. Um, the motion has been made by Mrs. Young. Question a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sparks. Any discussion?
Uh, yes, this is, I tried, just tried to pull it up and I'm getting a server error in the application, resource cannot be found. Is anybody else having that trouble? I just wanted to review what it was before.
Uh, it may be a server issue, but it's the salary scale.
Server error.
It is a server error.
The server error. I just tried it and it's.
Is, could could somebody just remind me, is this the one for the diesel mechanic?
And for the bus driver.
And for the bus driver. Um, Dr. Labat or Dr. D, or Dr. Labat, can you elaborate on the salary skill, current salary skill of the drivers and what you're proposing?
Yes, um, we are proposing that the starting salary is fifteen dollars and so the skill is reflective of that. We were also unable to give a diesel mechanic and so we've also uh worked on uh changed the diesel mechanic's salary to make it more competitive. Uh, Mr. Hunley did the research from the county and regional schools districts to be able to come up with a salary. Did you want to add anything, Ms. Rogers or Dr. Dina? Okay, we're good.
What's the current, about sixteen to twelve?
Twelve, starting.
I wanted to make sure the parents know that it was not seven twenty-five.
No, it's in.
No, I don't know where that came from.
It goes from twelve to fifteen. And they all go from fifteen to eighteen.
Okay. I didn't clarify any.
Yeah.
Run run that by me again.
The bus driver. Currently, twelve dollars an hour versus fifteen dollars an hour based on your experience. They were recommending that the minimum be fifteen and that would add to the total staff. So it would be at a fifteen to eighteen. You know, and uh that was very disturbing. Now, if you're incorrect, then we do not pay those drivers seven dollars and twenty cents an hour. We don't even pay our mother seven dollars and twenty cents an hour.
Well, that's, I guess how rumors get started. Okay, no, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. One thing I'd like to add, board, is that uh the approval of this uh salary uh schedule will also uh be an incentive that will be reflected on the uh bus drivers' uh next paycheck. So I think that that is one of the uh positive things that the district is moving forward to do in order to attract bus drivers to come. in order to attract bus drivers to come. So this is an immediate uh action. Uh with the discussions being made, oh, Dr. Schumay?
Sorry, I'm sorry. Uh I know at one point last school year, we talked about having um coaches, assistant coaches, other people uh lot, get a license so they could pitch in if it, if needed. But that would not affect their salaries. This would be uh as needed? Yes, but we're still recruiting our coaches and bus drivers, employees before and after school. Most school district that facilitate having full bus drivers use their own employees. So we're just trying to make a concerted effort to get more of our employees to drive because that, that will assist us greatly. But Dr. Dito has done some extensive recruiting efforts to try to get coaches to do before and after school and other employees. And is that having any success so far?
Yeah.
It contained. That was posted and I, I don't know, but uh while I was at home, I did have an opportunity to read that. And uh it's in the uh staff slash personnel items where uh the uh drivers that has gone through the training, it was a lot of them too. And I did notice several of our coaches and uh some other district personnel that's on there for approval. And it did state the ones that had gone through the training, additional training. Any other discussion? No other discussion, all in favor, will you please raise your right hand? It is unanimous. Thank you. Motion passes. Item number, number two, consideration and our discussion to approve staff slash personnel items. I need a requesting a motion to approve. So the motion has been made by Mr. Sparks, requesting a second. Second by Mrs. Young. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to item number three, consideration and our discussion to, to approve student performance platform, which is the C's proposal. It's good to see this proposal on the agenda, whereas it is um a online um I E P document for our special education department. All in favor, I need a motion to approve C.
So.
The motion is made by Mrs. Sparks, requesting a second. Second by Mrs. Young. Any discussion? Yes, Dr. Schumay.
Um. This, this has to do with, since this is I E P, um and I'm sure this is here, but I just want to make certain we've got all the necessary security in place because information?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to double check it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Schumay. It is good. Uh no other discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. The motion passes. Moving on to item four, consideration and our discussion to approve Dr. Janice Page's uh services, her proposal to continue working in the district. Uh might I add that uh Dr. Page has been with us for a while and she's really worked with our special education and our federal programs Title I and has been an essential uh person in pulling together the S M, uh documentations to the uh State Department. This uh budget, this proposal is for uh, for her to continue working with our current and our current federal program director to go through a proper transition and likewise to continue working with Mrs. Lanier, which is basically sort of new to her position also and giving them that extra support during this time where we have uh a loss of learning. Uh I'm requesting a motion to approve her proposal.
So.
The motion has been made by Mr. Sparks, second by Mrs. Young. Any uh discussion?
Quick question.
It's made.
Dr. LeBart, will this also uh involve us, the S M, the S M O? Let me ask for that.
Uh you're asking, will it be paid through S M O, federal funds? Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be used federal funds.
Any other discussion? No other discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Thank you. Moving on down, item seven, office of business management, consideration to approve our financials. I'm looking at the monthly financial statements reports, which is policy number one of board. I'm requesting that we approve the uh fund balance report, the cash balance report, the budget status report, the monthly revenue budget report, monthly expenditure report, and the certification and summary of reconciled bank statements with our, our motion. Requesting a motion to approve these reports. Um the motion has been made by Mrs. Young, requesting a second. Second by Dr. Schumay. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Think I'm at number, I'm at G now. Monthly add the Lauren tax collection analysis report. Um we looking at that. Is there any discussion that you all would like to offer? I reviewed it. Moving right along, C M S D, our fund balance trends. We've had a chance to review this. Likewise, I, the bank cash balance yearly uh comparison, that's great. And I'm moving to item J, consideration and our discussion to approve the budget amendment, requesting a motion. Um motion is made by Mrs. Young, requesting a second. I'm moving too fast, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
It's second by Mr. Sparks. Thank you, Mr. Sparks. Uh any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. Moving to item K, consideration and our discussion to approve fixed asset disposals, requesting a motion to approve.
So.
The motion is made by Mr. Sparks, requesting a second. Second by Mrs. Young. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have one quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Where, I'm assuming it's central office. Items thirty-one to the end are in central slash M I S. Where is that located? Central office?
Technology part.
Techno, okay. That, that was just a, that, that was just curious. Where in the world were y'all keeping all that stuff?
Well, we have a, a part, part of my room, but also I have a disposal, like storage of CSA powder room where I.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I just, I'm always.
It's a lot.
Yeah, it's a lot.
It's a junk room.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'm glad we're getting rid of the junk.
Yeah.
I'm very excited to get rid of it.
Yes.
Great. Okay, thank you. That was all.
But no other discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Thank you. Moving to item I. Uh whoa. Requesting a motion to uh approve our plane docket. That's pay our.
So.
Plane docket. Okay. Who requests the motion out of here? Mr., all right, the motion has been made by Mr. Sparks. We have a second. Second by Mrs. Young. Any discussion? All right.
Now, this, again, this is just clarification stuff. Um Committee for Children at Cook. What is, I've not seen that before. Could somebody explain what that is?
Where, where are you?
Uh sorry, it's uh thirty-four, thirty-seven, forty-eight.
Thirty-four, thirty-seven, forty-eight.
Oh, on the dock.
On the dock, yeah.
Oh, that's probably just the name of the vendor.
Oh, okay, okay.
The name is, and sometimes the vendor doesn't like what the service they do, but they thought that the application to get paid, that's what they put, so.
Yeah, it just, it just says Committee for Children. I couldn't quite figure out what it was. The other one I had is um thirty-four, thirty-nine, fifty-four, which is the Mississippi Department of Employment.
Yeah, that's, that's our.
We have, we have unemployment for all the people who did not come back to work after COVID.
Okay, yeah, I was just trying to see, it said something about, you know, planes and I just wanted to make sure that wasn't a bad thing.
We have, we have a big.
I just hadn't seen that before. Okay. And then uh thirty-four, thirty-eight, thirty, Stuart Stafford for an appraisal, is that the one we just got today? Or is that the one from two thousand fifteen? Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Do we have any other discussion? If no other discussion, all in favor approving to approve the docket, uh please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Now let's look at uh M, okay, I read it. M, federal programs and I D E A monthly financial review. Board, do we have any questions regarding the monthly financial review for uh federal programs and I D E A? Moving on, discussion of the current money market. Ms. Rogers?
Yes, so I was able to hear about our current depository today and they told me that they could give us a rate of point two five percent. They would not be able to blanket it into our current depository agreement, which is where we're getting point four percent. So the best they can do for us is point two five percent. That is a good rate for right now. I have requested rates from other depository or other institutions to see if they could give a more competitive rate. But if the board wanted to go ahead, they could take action tonight by approving us to keep this with the current depository or you can give me until next board meeting and I can get in more information from other institutions for different rates. That will be a board decision.
What was the percentage?
The, the rate that we have been quoted is point two five percent for two years.
Oh, can we um look at um waiting for the next meeting and look at different rates?
Yeah, I'll say it's a good rate for right now, but there may be a better rate by another institution. I would appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So what we'll do is uh wait for you to get some additional quotes. Thank you, board. Now we're moving to our consent agenda, which is item uh eight, consent agenda, policy B C B L. Uh what I'll do is just briefly, uh board, you've had an opportunity to read all of the uh consent agenda at this time, I hope. And you know that the consent agenda is basically the uh contracts, the M O U's. Uh I'll say uh district support proposals from different organizations as well as instructional resources that the district is approving, uh that the uh district is setting the floors for approval. So I'm requesting that we, I'm requesting a motion to approve item A. I'm gonna look all the way down to the bottom, okay? Item A through the item, I'll say uh where it stops where we say number five, the dates to remember. All of that does not have to be approved. So I'll say through U, A through U, which ends with consideration to approve twenty-twenty-one school bus turnaround. Requesting a motion to approve the consent agenda. The motion has been made by Ms. Young, requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sparks. Any discussion? If no discussion, any discussion? Question, Ms. O'Donnell?
Okay, no, this again is just for my information. Dr. LeBart, I see you are traveling. Um do you happen to remember the dates? I was just curious for your travel. There are two B department, the Steering Committee for the um National Superintendents Alliance. I hadn't gotten all that information. I just nominated the B. And wasn't one of these, you got the, the um, yeah, you got the fellowship. The fellowship. Yeah, congratulations. Okay. Yeah, no, I was just, just curious. I think that was in August. Yeah, yeah, thank you.
It is great. Uh okay, right now, there are no other discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Thank you. Consent agenda is approved. Please make note to the board meetings that we have September four, uh first, September first, the Board of Trust Hour Review Meeting, which will be at Stokes Elementary School at eleven-thirty. And September seventh, our regular uh scheduled meeting at six o'clock. Okay, now we're um at item nine. Excuse me, yes, sir.
Are we still having our retreat?
Yes, it was approved, I believe, uh on our Wednesday until last Wednesday. I'm sorry. Yeah, but yes, the board retreat is scheduled for August twenty-first. It'll be in our small boardroom at eight-thirty, beginning at eight-thirty.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on to uh item number nine, requesting a motion to go into pro determination for executive session, which is policy B C B K.
So.
All right, the motion is made by Mr. Sparks, does not.
Go back into regular session please. We did enter into executive session. The motion to approve our minutes was maybe by Mr. Sparks, second by Dr. Schumay. Discussion and it was a four zero vote. The motion was made to approve the property. Paper's fine, excuse me, to approve the per- approved purchase of real property. The motion to approve was made by Mr. Young, second by Mr. Sparks. There was a discussion and the motion passed with a four zero vote. Made the motion to return it to regular session was made by Mr. Sparks, second by myself. Discussion and voted four zero. I came out and got you all and uh right now I'm requesting a motion to adjourn.
So.
The motion is made by Mr. Sparks, second. I'll make the second. Any discussion? All in favor? Four zero, it is managed. Thank you all, have a blessed evening.